Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome all of you to this Monday, September 27th special council meeting. For those of you watching on Zoom and at home on YouTube, welcome. I would like to call this meeting in accordance with section 3.07 of the whole new charter and section 2.04.060 of the city code, hereby call a special meeting. The city council in order, Madam Clerk, you please take the role.
Housewoman Marino, present.
Housewoman Ferry.
Present.
Housewoman Ranzilli.
Present.
Housewoman Vargas.
Present.
Housewoman Jermaine.
Present.
Housewoman Donigan.
Present.
Housewoman Riley.
Present.
Housewoman President Papalosis.
Present. We have a couple of agenda items on the docket for this evening. The first is pursuant pursuant to Charter section 2.06. The appointment of Richard D. Campopiano as Ward four council member filling the vacancy created by the resignation of council member Edward Brady. Is there a motion to approve the appointment of Richard D. Campopiano to fill the balance of the term of the vacant ward for council seat? Councilmember Ferry.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointment of Richard D. Campopiano to fill the balance of the term of the vacant ward for council seat. Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Ferry, and we have a second under discussion. I think Councilmember Donigan seconded it. There being none, clerk, please take the role.
Housewoman Marino.
Yes.
Housewoman Ferry.
Yes.
Housewoman Ranzilli.
Yes.
Housewoman Vargas.
Yes.
Housewoman Jermaine.
Yes.
Housewoman Donigan.
Yes.
Housewoman Riley.
Yes.
Housewoman President Papalosis.
Yes. Mr. Campopiano, can you come forward to be sworn in by the city clerk? Congratulations, Councilmember Campopiano. That's certainly a mouthful. Glad I'm not the only person with 10 letters in their name serving on the council. Welcome, sir. We move on to the next item before us. Nominations for the office of council vice president.
I'd like to nominate Robert Ferry for council vice president.
Second.
Can we have a motion and a second on that? Are there any other nominations for the office of vice president?
Yes, I nominate Nicole Ranzilli.
We have nomination of Nicole Ranzilli. For council vice president seconds aren't required for nominations in this fashion per Roberts rules. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations for council vice president? There being none, I will close nominations. Do both members accept their nominations? I accept. Okay. Nominations are now closed, both accept. Because there are two names, what we'll do is when we take the role, instead of saying yes or no, say the name of the council member that you would like to serve the vacancy of council vice president. So if it's councilmember Ferry, it's the councilmember Ferry. If it's councilmember Ranzilli, it's the councilmember Ranzilli. All right. But please take the role.
Housewoman Marino.
Councilmember Ferry.
Housewoman Ferry.
Councilman Ferry.
Housewoman Ranzilli. I'm sorry. Housewoman Vargas.
Councilmember Ferry.
Housewoman Jermaine.
Councilmember Ferry.
Housewoman Donigan.
Councilmember Ferry.
Housewoman Riley.
Councilwoman Ranzilli.
Houseman Campopiano.
Councilman Ferry.
Council President Papalosis.
Councilmember Ferry. Councilmember Ferry, congratulations. You've been nominated and elected to the office of the vice president.
Thank you.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Just all those watching at home, the next meeting will be at seven o'clock. All those in favor to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to call September 27th full council meeting to water clerk. Will you please take the moment?
Councila Moreno.
Present.
Councila Barry.
Present.
Councila Ranzulli.
Here.
Councila Vargas.
Present.
Councila Donigan.
Present.
Councila Riley.
Present.
Present. I'd like to entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the last meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? There being none, Madam Court, please take the roll.
Councila Moreno.
Yes.
Councila Ranzulli.
Yes.
Councila Vargas.
Yes.
Councila Jermaine.
Present.
Councila Donigan.
Present.
Councila Capiano.
Present.
Councila Riley.
Present.
Present. I'd like to entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the last meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? There being none, Madam Court, please take the roll.
Councila Moreno.
Yes.
Councila Ranzulli.
Yes.
Councila Vargas.
Yes.
Councila Jermaine.
Yes.
Councila Donigan.
Councila Capiano.
Thank.
Councila Riley.
Yes.
Councila Barry.
Yes.
Councila Pappalos.
Yes. Thank you. Moving on to public acknowledgements and commendations. First up, we have Emily Sinita, Councilwoman Ranzulli. The floor is yours.
For a young lady who was not supposed to walk or talk, Cranston East graduate Emily Sinita has shown the world how to fly. I was fortunate enough to meet Emily last year when she was interning at the mayor's office, and we became fast friends. We have a lot in common, including our mentor, Representative Barbara Ann Fenton-Fung, who has been an integral part of Emily's life since she was three, and in fact, did teach her how to walk. In a year of darkness, Emily continued to shine bright throughout our Cranston community. Throughout COVID, she volunteered at the Vaccine Clinic at the Senior Center and would post positive and inspiring messages on social media daily for us all to remember to put life into perspective. After being told by Sean O'Rourke at the Providence Rescue Mission that there were people who were homeless and freezing all winter, she took action. Emily collected over 200 blankets for those in need, and she's continuing that tradition this year with a goal of collecting 1,000 blankets. At her last fundraiser, she raised over $1,500 to purchase these blankets, and she has a movie night planned on Sunday, October 24th, at the Atwood Avenue Field to watch Hocus Pocus. She hopes that people will make donations to purchase more blankets for the homeless as well as donate blankets themselves. Emily wants to change the world by making one smile at a time to someone who needs it. And Emily is one of the most kind people I've ever met. Emily, you are my inspiration, and I would like to present you with this official citation from the City Council. It reads, "The Cranston City Council, be it known to all that the Cranston City Council hereby issues this citation to Emily Sinita in proud recognition for collecting over 200 blankets for the homeless and for your assistance with the COVID-19 at the Cranston Senior Center Vaccination Clinic. The entire council extends its sincerest congratulations and very best wishes on this memorable occasion, and we express our hope for your continued good fortune." And Emily's just gonna say a few words. Good evening. My name is Emily Sinita, and I live in the Edgesechelle, Cranston, and I graduated from Cranston East in 2020, officially graduated from the Cranston Tradition Program in 2021. I'm working at the Cranston Senior Center, and I got the idea with Sean O'Rourke about the blanket drive. Thank you for this citation, and I'm so honored and acknowledged here tonight. I have to say a special thanks to Jay, Jamie, Stephen, State Rep. Barbara Ann Fenton-Fung, Mayor Fung, Mayor Hopkins, Anthony, and Ed Brady, Councilwoman Noko Razzulli, and Councilman Matt Riley, and my family for all your help with the blanket drive and all your support. I can't do this without everyone's help, even though I could do this in the middle of the pandemic, but somehow we all came together and managed it to get done. We worked as a team, and we made it happen. I am getting started in my goal in life, in changing the world, changing the world one smile at a time, and please follow my journey on Instagram, and my handle is @TheRylanGirl. This year's blanket drive starts October 3rd, and my goal is to get over 1,000 blankets. If you would like to donate, you could drop off the blankets at the Cranston Thirsty Beavers, and more information is coming out this week. Thank you.
We've got one more citation for you, Emily. Emily? Mayor Hopkins wasn't able to attend tonight, but he wanted to issue a citation to Emily as well. So I just want to read that to you, Emily. "This to certify and make known unto all whom these present shall come that Mayor Kenneth J. Hopkins hereby issues a citation to Emily Sinita in recognition of your community service work with underserved communities throughout the city of Cranston. The city of Cranston extends its sincerest appreciation and best wishes in your future endeavors." Emily has been a rock star. She's been a friend of the mayor's office through two administrations now, four administrations, four years. And we, Mayor Hopkins wanted to extend his thanks for all you do in the community, so.
Thank you so much, Emily. Thank you for all that you do. And for those taking notes at home, October 3rd, the blanket drive starts. The goal is 1,000 blankets and bringing them to the Thirsty Beaver in Cranston, and we'll make sure those get to Emily. I just want to also acknowledge my friend and former colleague, Council Vice President Ed Brady, who's in the audience tonight. Welcome back, Councilman. Thank you all. Moving on to public acknowledgements and commendations, we have a commendation for John Cardulo. He couldn't make it tonight. He had a scheduling conflict. He sends his sincerest thanks. I will certainly get the citation to him. John is being recognized, just want to just mention this real quick. He's being recognized for his 46 years of service and dedication in running the Saturday morning basketball instructional program at Parkview Middle School. He's the longest, he's got the longest run of anyone that has held that job. He's also been inducted into the Ryland Slow Pitch Softball Hall of Fame, and he's worked for many, many, many mayors over the last 46 years. So just want to say thank you to Mr. Cardulo, and we appreciate it, and I will make sure we get the citation to you. Thank you, John. Okay, moving on to public hearings and public comment. Public hearings are limited to the subject matter of docketed matters only. Public comment may be permitted, and will be subject to time limitations. We try to limit everyone to four minutes. If anyone is in chambers that would like to speak on any of the docketed items, now is the time to come up, state your name and address for the record. And one more bit of housekeeping, keeping, I forgot to mention in the beginning, for Ron, our stenographer, if you're speaking and you have a mask, if you can pull it down, might help in the process. Anybody here for docketed items? Attorney DeBona, did you want to come up now? Thank you very much, Attorney DeBona. To Ms. Lemar, is anybody online that has public comment? If you'd like, raise your hand.
Yes, we have one account name is Beth.
Okay.
And they are on the call.
Hi, Beth. You can unmute and name an address for the record, please.
My name is Beth Naraki. I live at 59 Bryant Road in Cranston.
Okay, Beth, go ahead.
I am interested in the prohibiting of roosters. We've always had them in our neighborhood since I've been here about 17 years.
Beth, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I hate to cut you off. You're gonna have to speak under non-docketed items or wait till next month. The rooster ordinance is being submitted as new business, and we'll not have a hearing this evening.
Oh, it was stated that it was gonna be spoke on tonight.
It's being referred to the Ordinance Committee, I believe, on October 14th.
Okay.
So if you'd like to hold your public comment, you can hold it till then, or you can wait till...
I will, I will wait till then.
Okay, or you can wait till the undocketed items later in the docket, but right now, we're only having public comment on docketed items.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Beth. I appreciate it. Is there anybody else on the call for docketed items?
I do not see any other folks for a public comment at this time.
All right. I will close public hearings on docketed items. Moving on to resolutions, we have a resolution in recognition of Blood Cancer Month sponsored by Councilwoman Vargas. Councilwoman Vargas, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The resolution before us this evening, pretty straightforward, month of September is Blood Cancer Month. It's a resolution that I've submitted and urged passage this evening. There's more than 1 million folks here in our country, United States, living with cancer or in remission. And it's noted in the resolution, every five minutes, someone is diagnosed with lymphoma or leukemia. This is something that is very touching, dear, near to my heart. In 2016, in the month of July, I was diagnosed with cancer, with leukemia. Currently in remission, I have not hit my five-year mark yet, and it's a story that I share very openly with everyone. And it would, I would hate to go by the month of September without acknowledging that it is Blood Cancer Awareness Month. And so, again, happy to be here. Never thought that I'd actually be sitting here alive, but thankfully, because of the, you know...
I'm just gonna read that, okay? It reads, "The Cranston City Council, be it known to all that the Cranston City Council hereby issues the citation to Emily Sanita in proud recognition for collecting over 200 blankets for the homeless and for your assistance with the COVID-19 at the Cranston Senior Center Vaccination Clinic. The entire council extends its sincerest congratulations and very best wishes on this memorable occasion, and we express our hope for your continued good fortune." And Emily's just gonna say a few words.
Good evening, my name is Emily Sanita, and I live in the address of Cranston, and I graduated from Cranston East in 2020, officially graduated for the Cranston Trade Issue Program in 2021. I'm working at the Cranston Senior Center, and I got the idea with Sean Aron about the blanket drive. Thank you for the citation, and I'm so honored and acknowledged here tonight. I have to say, I have to say a special thanks to Jay, Jamie, Stephen, State Rep Barbara Anfield-Fung, Mayor Fung, Mayor Hopkins, Anthony, Anne Ed Brady, Councilwoman Noko Rizouli, and Councilwoman Matt Riley, and my family for all your help with the blanket drive and all your support. I can't do this without everyone's help, even though I could do this in the middle of the pandemic, but somehow we all came together and managed it to get done. We worked as a team, and we made it happen. I am getting started in my goal in life, in changing the world, changing the world once in a time, and please follow my journey on Instagram, and my handle is @rileyngirl. This year's blanket drive starts October 3rd, and my goal is to get over 1,000 blankets. If you would like to donate, you could drop off the blankets at the Cranston Thirsty Beavers, and more information is coming out this week. Thank you.
We've got one more citation for you, Emily. Emily? Mayor Hopkins wasn't able to attend tonight, but he wants to issue a citation to Emily as well. So I just want to read that to you, Emily. "This to certify and make known unto all whom these present shall come that Mayor Kenneth J. Hopkins hereby issues a citation to Emily Sanita in recognition of your community service work with underserved communities throughout the city of Cranston. The city of Cranston extends its sincerest appreciation and best wishes in your future endeavors." Emily has been a rock star. She's been a friend of the mayor's office through two administrations now, four administrations, four years, and we, Mayor Hopkins wanted to extend his, his thanks for all you do in the community, so.
Thank you so much, Emily. Thank you for all that you do. And for those taking notes at home, October 3rd, the blanket drive starts. The goal is 1,000 blankets and bringing them to the thirsty beaver in Cranston, and we'll make sure those get to Emily. I just want to also acknowledge my friend and former colleague, Council Vice President Ed Brady, who's in the audience tonight. Welcome back, Councilman. Thank, thank you all. Moving on to public acknowledgements and commendations, we have a commendation for John Cardulo. He couldn't make it tonight. He had a scheduling conflict. He sends, he sends his sincerest thanks. I will certainly get the citation to him. John is being recognized, just wanna just mention this real quick. He's being recognized for his 46 years of service and dedication in running the Saturday morning basketball instructional program at Parkview Middle School. He's the longest, he's got the longest run of anyone that has held that job. He's also been inducted into the Ryland Slow Pitch Softball Hall of Fame, and he's worked for many, many, many mayors over the last 46 years. So just want to say thank you to Mr. Cardulo, and we appreciate it, and I will make sure we get the citation to you. Thank you, John. Okay, moving on to public hearings and public comment. Public hearings are limited to the subject matter of docketed matters only. Public comment may be permitted, and will be subject to time limitations. We try to limit everyone to four minutes. If anyone is in chambers that would like to speak on any of the docketed items, now is the time to come up, state your name and address for the record. And one more bit of housekeeping, keeping, I forgot to mention in the beginning, for Ron, our stenographer, if you're speaking and you have a mask, if you can pull it down, might help in the process. Anybody here for docketed items? Attorney, Attorney DeBona, did you want to come up now? Thank you very much, Attorney DeBona, to Ms. Lemer. If, is anybody online that has public comment, if you'd like, raise your hand?
Yes, we have one account name is Beth.
Okay.
And they are on the call.
Hi, Beth, you can unmute and name an address for the record, please.
My name is Beth Naraki. I live at 59 Bryant Road in Cranston.
Okay, Beth, go ahead.
I am interested in the prohibiting of roosters. We've always had them in our neighborhood since I've been here about 17 years.
Beth, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I hate to cut you off, that you're gonna have to speak under non-docketed items or wait till next month, the rooster ordinance is being submitted as new business and will not have a hearing this evening.
Oh, it was stated that it was gonna be spoke on tonight.
It's being referred to the Ordinance Committee, I believe, on October 14th.
Okay.
So if you'd like to hold your public comment, you can hold it till then, or you can wait till...
I will, I will wait till then.
Okay, or you can wait till the, undocketed items later in the docket, but right now we're only having public comment on docketed items.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Beth, I appreciate it.
What?
Is there anybody else on the call for docketed items?
I do not see any other folks for a public comment at this time.
All right, I will close public hearings on docketed items. Moving on to resolutions, we have a resolution in recognition of Blood Cancer Month sponsored by Councilwoman Vargas. Councilwoman Vargas, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The resolution before us this evening, pretty straightforward, month of September is Blood Cancer Month. It's a resolution that I've submitted and urge passage this evening. There's more than 1 million folks here in our country, United States, living with cancer or in remission, and noted in the resolution, every five minutes someone is diagnosed with, with lymphoma or leukemia. This is something that is very touching, dear, near to my heart. In 2016, on, in the month of July, I was diagnosed with cancer, with leukemia, currently in remission. I have not hit my five-year mark yet, and it's a story that I share very openly with everyone, and it would, I would hate to go by the month of September without acknowledging that it is Blood Cancer Awareness Month. And so, again, happy to be here, never thought that I'd actually be sitting here alive, but thankfully, because of the, you know, the medication, the research, and everything that's being done, I'm, I'm here today. So again, very straightforward, and I just hope that the Cranston City Council joins me in proclaiming the month of September, even though we just have a few days left, Blood Cancer Awareness Month. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Vargas, under discussion. Councilmember Jermaine.
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank... Thank you, Council President, and I'm not gonna be long, I just want to thank Councilwoman Vargas for bringing this forward. Myself has, has, have a son that has sickle cell disease, and you know, when he has the crisis, we have to bring him wide away and have those blood transfusions, so it's important. And a lot of parents have been suffered, a lot of children, and understand the importance of bloods, it's really important. Thank you for bringing this up.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Marino.
Thank you, Council President. I would like to thank Councilwoman Vargas for bringing this resolution forward, and thank her for her strength and her courage and her dedication to her community. Despite the setbacks, she handles herself humbly with modesty and with a lot of self-sacrifice and strength, and I would love to be added as a co-sponsor if she would be so inclined. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other discussion? There being none, just like to echo my colleagues' comments and thank Councilmember Vargas for bringing this forward and for, and for sharing your battle, and it means a lot to us that you share that and helps, you know, bring blood cancer to the forefront and acknowledge that it's there, and hopefully people will get checked and monitored for that. So thank you very much for bringing that forward. Madam Clerk, will you please take the role?
Council President, we need a motion in a second.
Do we, did we have a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Councilwoman Marino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rizouli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vargas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jermaine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Donigan?
Councilwoman Campi Piano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Riley?
Yes.
Council Vice President Ferry?
Yes.
Yes. Moving on, we have a resolution in recognition of National Hispanic Heritage Month sponsored by Councilwoman Vargas and co-sponsored by Council President Paploskas. I want to entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, under discussion. Councilmember Vargas.
Thank you, Council President, once again, very straightforward resolution. The starting of September 15th, always through October 15th, is a celebration of the Hispanic Heritage Month where we recognize and celebrate the contributions made.
Councilmember, can you mind pulling your mask off, Ron? I'm sorry to stop you tracks there.
Thank you. So again, Hispanic Heritage Month started September 15th, it goes right through October 15th. It's a month that we, every day, we obviously recognize and celebrate the contributions that many Hispanics have done, or Hispanics have done, contributed here in the United States. But most importantly, I wanted to make sure that we get this resolution before us. City of Cranston's demographics are obviously changing day by day, very rapidly, with the US Census results that have just come out. We obviously see a lot of change in the demographics there as well, but again, it's an opportunity to celebrate many of the contributions that the Latinos have made in our country, in Rhode Island, and here in the city of Cranston. So I urge my colleagues and hope that they are able to support me to recognize the month of September 15th to October 15th as Hispanic Heritage Month. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, under discussion. Councilmember Jermaine.
Thank you, Council President, and again, Councilwoman Vargas, thank you for this, because when we talk about diversity, that's what we mean, action. So we take action to match our world. So I would like to be a participant in the resolution to really sit up with this together.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Councilwoman Marino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rizouli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vargas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jermaine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Donigan?
Councilwoman Campi Piano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Riley?
Yes.
Council Vice President Ferry?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, everyone. Beyond, we have a resolution urging the school committee to implement African heritage history education in the Cranston Public School Curriculum, sponsored by Councilwoman Jermaine. I want to entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved, and a second, under discussion. Councilmember Jermaine.
Thank you, Council President. This resolution, as many of you knows, that education is something that is deep. I care about it a lot, and I was so happy to see that finally the State Assembly passed the bill, the African Heritage History Education in elementary and secondary school. So as we know, Cranston always, always in the forefront to be a pioneer on doing things, and I want to really encourage the school committee and to know we are here for them, and this can start be the first to implement this curriculum, because as we can see, education is not only about the skills, but it's about the disposition, about the attitude we teach in our school, and that's what's gonna make a difference. And to make a difference, and we have all aspects, all perspective of history, and that's why we make the difference, and having this in our curriculum will make such a difference in our next generation. So I urge my colleagues to vote for this resolution, and always we have a better school, better educated children, and where all perspective being taken into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Jermaine, any discussion? Councilmember Riley.
Thank you, Council President. Not to comment on the substance of whether or not the school, the school department is putting this in or isn't, I just worry about us crossing the line into the school committee and overstepping our, excuse me, overstepping our bounds, and it almost sends a message that we don't have any trust in the school department or school committee to do their work. So without commenting on the actual substance, I just don't think we should be telling the school committee or school department what to do. So just for those reasons alone, I wouldn't be able to support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Riley. Any other discussion? Council Vice President Ferry.
Attorney Videcia, are we crossing the line if we were to approve this resolution in telling the school department what curriculum they shouldn't, shouldn't do?
Well, as you know, a resolution is merely that. It's, it's not an ordinance, it's not law, it's merely a suggestion, so. No, it's a legal matter, it's not crossing the line, no. Whether you think it's intruding, as it were, into the province committee, that's up for, that's up to the council to decide, but legally, there's no problem with a resolution, it's merely a suggestion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Donigan.
Thank you, Council President. I, I would agree with Councilman Riley, if, if this were an ordinance, as Attorney Videcia just said, it, it's merely a resolution, you know, urging that the curriculum that is already mandated by state law that it be seen through and implemented here in Cranston, which I, you know, I think we're all confident that that will occur. And in the past, the, the school committee has sent us resolutions, there might have been one resolution that the city council, in my time, has passed, sent to the school committee as well, so I don't think resolutions between the two bodies is, is something that's new. And I think, you know, on the substance of the matter, you know, I think it's importance can't be more overstated and more critical in, you know, teaching, you know, the next generation of, of global citizens.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other discussion? Councilmember Rizouli.
I just have a question, maybe for you, Council President, or whoever can answer who's been on here for a long time. Is it typical to put forth resolutions for things that already passed, like as far as law from the state, because usually we're urging the state to pass something, and this is already passed, so I'm just wondering if that's a thing that we do?
I'll defer to legal counsel, I mean, resolution is typically the will of the body, I would, I think.
I didn't really mean like legally, I just meant as a common practice.
Common practice is, is generally, to piggyback on what Attorney Videcia said, a resolution expresses the will of the council or the thoughts of the council on a matter, and generally speaking, that expression is done before the passage of some state law or other law. So if a law has already passed, what are we really saying should be done?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Attorney. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Campo Piano, first time saying that, I didn't want to mess it up.
Has this been brought up to the city, the school committee? Has this been brought up to the school committee?
To the sponsor? Could probably a question to the sponsor.
Yes, I've been in touch with the many member of the school committee and the superintendent as well, so they know about it.
Thank you, Councilmembers. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Riley.
For, for the sponsor, in speaking to the superintendent, did she say she was implementing this, or what was her comments to you?
She will implement it.
Thank you, Councilmembers. Councilmember Marino.
Thank you, Council President. To, to this issue, I understand the desire of Councilwoman Jermaine, despite the bill having been passed, I'm sure Councilwoman Jermaine would agree with me that our school department has always complied with a ride, and they will do so here because they are required to under state law. We have an amazing school department, and I have no doubt that they will implement what is required of them, but I take Councilwoman Jermaine at her, you know, good faith attempt to just stress the importance to the curriculum of the subject matter, and for that reason, I would be in support of the resolution this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Marino. Councilmember Rizouli.
I just want to stay ahead of time that I'm definitely in support of the contents of the resolution and of the law that already passed, but I think that, as Attorney Angel explains, it sets a bad precedent for us to perhaps keep reiterating things that already passed, because as laws get passed at the legislature, we just gonna make resolutions and then pass them again? That doesn't make sense to me, it will make everything take longer all the time if each of us did that, and I just want to make that clear, that that would be my only reason. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rizouli. Any other questions or comments? There being none, I'll just say that I will be in support of this resolution this evening. I do think it's a little unorthodox to pass the resolution with it already passing the state law, but I think the intent of Councilmember Jermaine is good, and I will support her in that, and that being said, Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Councilwoman Marino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rizouli?
No.
Councilwoman Vargas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jermaine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Donigan? Councilwoman Campi Piano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Riley?
No.
Council Vice President Ferry?
Yes.
Council President Paploskas?
Yes. Thank you, motion passes. Moving on to report of committees, we have the Finance Chair, which I am acting chair right now, I'd like to defer the introduction of these ordinances to the Vice Chair. Council Vice President Ferry, if you can introduce these. The first one up is the resolution on the real estate tax abatements. And I believe these are all passed out of committee.
Okay. All these following passed in committee, I would refer them full passage. I'm not, I wasn't prepared to do this. Sorry.
That's okay. You want to just read, just read them one by one. First one's a resolution with the tax abatements.
Okay, the resolution authorizing real estate tax abatements.
Okay, first up, we have the resolution authorizing real estate tax abatements. I want to entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Councilwoman Marino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rizouli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vargas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jermaine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Donigan?
Councilwoman Campi Piano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Riley?
Yes.
Council Vice President Ferry?
Yes.
Council President Paploskas?
Yes.
Next, we have a resolution authorizing motor vehicle tax abatements.
Thank you, entertaining motion on the real estate tax abatements. Or motor vehicle tax abatements, I apologize.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? There being none, Clerk, please take the role.
Councilwoman Marino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rizouli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vargas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jermaine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Donigan?
Councilwoman Campi Piano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Riley?
Yes.
Council Vice President Ferry?
Yes.
Council President Paploskas?
Yes.
Next, we have resolution authorizing tangible tax abatements, which were passed on committee.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. What's it, a motion to? Motion approved?
Second.
Any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Councilwoman Marino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rizouli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vargas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jermaine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Donigan?
Councilwoman Campi Piano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Riley?
Yes.
Council Vice President Ferry?
Yes.
Council President Paploskas?
Yes.
Next, we have tax interest waiver approvals, which were passed on committee.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmen. I want to entertain a motion to approve the waiver, tax interest waiver approvals.
Second.
We have a motion.
Motion, motion to approve the tax interest waiver approvals.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Your motion in a second. Any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Councilwoman Marino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rizouli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vargas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jermaine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Donigan?
Councilwoman Campi Piano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Riley?
Yes.
Council Vice President Ferry?
Yes.
Council President Paploskas?
Yes, and then on the last item, Lisa Andoja, the city council grant writer, she is on her way, she's running a few minutes late, so without objection, if we can skip over this item and come back to it, that would be great. Is there any objection to doing that?
No objection.
There being none, thank you, Councilman Ferry. Moving on to the ordinance committee, Councilman Riley.
Thank you, Council President. For the ordinance committee, the following ordinances were passed out of committee and are before the full body for, for consideration. First is ordinance 5-21-09, sponsored by Council President Paploskas. This passed in committee, and I'm urging passage tonight.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Councilwoman Marino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rizouli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vargas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jermaine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Donigan?
Councilwoman Campi Piano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Riley?
Yes.
Council Vice President Ferry?
Yes.
Council President Paploskas?
Yes.
All right, next, we have ordinance 7-21-09, sponsored by Councilman Donigan, Councilwoman Marino, Vargas, and Jermaine, and this is regarding filming and recording of meetings. This has passed from the ordinance committee, and I urge passage tonight.
Thank you, Councilman. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? I just have one item to the sponsors, would you mind if I asked to be a co- I just have one item to the sponsors. Would you mind if I asked to be a co-sponsor? Thank you. Any, anyone else like to be a co-sponsor?
I would also like to be a co-sponsor.
Okay. There being no other discussion, Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Councilwoman Marino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rinzoli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vargas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jermaine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Donigan? Councilwoman Campo Piano?
Yes.
Councilman Riley?
Yes.
Council Vice President Ferry?
Yes.
Council President Paplos.
Yes.
Next, we have ordinance seven dash two one dash one zero for a change of zone, thirteen sixty-nine Park Avenue and Zero Park Avenue. Petition filed by Sprague Covington LLC. This passed, this met approval and passed of the ordinance committee and I urge approval here tonight.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Under discussion, Councilmember Marino.
Thank you, Council President Paplos. With respect to this ordinance, I just had a question or a point of order. In our charter, Chapter three, Section eleven, we are required to have ordinances sponsored by either the administration or council. And I don't see any sponsor for this ordinance here, so I'm just wondering who the sponsor is.
Thank you, Councilman. We actually took the wind out of my sail. I was going to entertain a floor amendment on that. So typically, we do have to have a sponsor even on a zoning change, so so we need a floor amendment if somebody would like to sponsor this. Councilmember Donigan?
I have no issue sponsoring it. It's Ward three if it, if it makes sense.
Thank you, Councilmember Donigan.
I would like to co-sponsor that.
I'd like to sponsor it too.
Yes.
Okay, we have two sponsors. Do we need a second on that? Okay, we don't need a second. We now have two sponsors. Anybody else like to sponsor it before we move away? Thank you. Any other discussion on that? There being none. To our legal counsel, do I need to take a role on the amended ordinance? Okay, so I'll take a vote on the amend, the amendment to add the two sponsors to the ordinance.
Councilwoman Marino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rinzoli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vargas? Councilwoman Jermaine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Donigan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Campo Piano?
Yes.
Councilman Riley?
Yes.
Council Vice President Ferry?
Yes.
Council President Paplos.
Yes. Okay, now a motion to approve the amended ordinance with the sponsors.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the amended ordinance? There being none, Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Councilwoman Marino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rinzoli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vargas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jermaine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Donigan? Councilwoman Campo Piano?
Yes.
Councilman Riley?
Yes.
Council Vice President Ferry?
Yes.
Council President Paplos.
Yes. Moving on, we have an ordinance, oh, sorry. Councilman Riley, this is you.
Thank you, Council President. We have ordinance eight dash two one dash three, ordinance for stopping, standing and parking on a specific street on Dyer Avenue. And this passed through the ordinance committee and I urge passage tonight. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Sorry, Councilman Riley, I need more coffee, apparently. Any discussion on the ordinance before us? There being none, Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Councilwoman Marino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rinzoli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vargas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jermaine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Donigan? Councilwoman Campo Piano?
Yes.
Councilman Riley?
Yes.
Council Vice President Ferry?
Yes.
Council President Paplos.
Thank you very much. And I think that concludes the business of the ordinance committee. All right, I'm going to move on to public comment for undocketed items. Does anybody here from the public that would like to speak on undocketed items? We'll do the chambers first. There being none, is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak under undocketed items? That would be the time to raise your hand.
Yes, first count is my CRF.
Okay. Good evening. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, it's Marcia Fowler, thirty-five mil Nav.
Welcome, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I'd like to extend a public thank you to Councilwoman Vargas. I recently emailed her about a safety issue on a sidewalk in Edgewood. And within just a few days, she had the issue solved. So thank you, Councilwoman Vargas.
Thank, thank you very much. Mr. Lima, is there anybody else with their hand up in the Zoom waiting room?
No public comment.
Okay, seeing that there is none online and in chambers, I will close public comment for undocketed items. Moving on, we have the election and/or appointment of city officials. Diversity Commission, appointment of Matthew Buchanan for term ending January second, twenty twenty-three, sponsored by Council Minority Leader Donigan. This is a minority leader appointment, so no vote will be taken. We also have the appointment of Naku Shibusawu. I probably messed that up.
Neoko Shibusawa.
Thank you, Councilmember Donigan, for the term ending January second, twenty twenty-three. This is also a minority leader appointment brought forth by Council Minority Leader Donigan. No vote will be taken. Moving on to Cranston Public Library Board of Trustees, we have the appointment of Michael Goldberg filling the unexpired term of Fred Razner for term ending August thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. And I believe this came with a recommendation from Director Gasha from the library. So I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the appointment of Michael Goldberg? There being none, Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Moving on to report of city officers, we have none. To executive communications, we have the legal expense analysis for seven one twenty twenty-one to nine twenty-seven, twenty twenty-one. Are there any questions for the administration? There being none, we will move on to a request for a continued service. Director Moretti? Thank you, Council President. Chief Mancini has met the requirements for continuation of service. And it's recommended that you approve his continuance. Thank you. Okay, we need a motion to continue for one year. Deputy Chief Mancini?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Councilwoman Marino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rinzoli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vargas? Councilwoman Jermaine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Donigan? Councilwoman Campo Piano?
Yes.
Councilman Riley?
Yes.
Council Vice President Ferry?
Yes.
Council President Paplos.
Yes, that concludes the executive communications. Moving on to Council President Communications. I just want to take an opportunity to welcome our new councilperson from Ward four, Councilman Richard Campo Piano. Thank you very much for stepping up to serve your ward. And hopefully, in the next couple of days, we can get all of your information up on the website, your email, your phone number. That way, your constituents can reach out to you. And please lean on any of us for any help or constituent issues that might come up. We're, we're all one team here. So congratulations, Mr. Campo Piano.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Council, for your support. And I hope to gain your trust and your friendship. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Councilmember Communications, Councilwoman Vargas. The floor is yours.
Thank you. I promise to try to be as brief as possible. All right, so items, just a few items on here. One of them is, other than the ones that I have here, I do also have two additional ones. And I don't know whether or not they should be listed on here or moved to public works. But one of them is update on building on Broad Street. I'm not sure if the administration has any update. I did reach out to C cap today. I, it was end of day, so I didn't hope to get a response, honestly, in all fairness to them. Do we have any former or current tenants from the building on Broad Street still at the hotel? That C cap is still assisting with the rental assistance. I know that's, that's only my, that's my own concern. I was trying to reach out to a few of the former tenants just to kind of get a sense, but I didn't hear back either.
To my knowledge, I don't know. Stephen may know. So we don't know if there's anyone there, but if they are, they're on their own at this point. But we don't, we don't know one way or the other. We would doubt, to our knowledge, Stephen, to your recollection, what were we down to? The number of families or the number of individuals? At what point in time was that? So Stephen mentioned around the beginning of September, as well, four or five, to his knowledge, at that point in time.
Okay.
That was pretty much the last contact.
Thank you, Director Moretti. Any idea if that building is being worked on? I've, obviously, I drive by it every day on my way to the, to the office, but I'm just curious. I haven't seen work, but it also could be because I'm leaving extremely early and coming back late.
You're correct, unfortunately. Well, the obligation, I spoke to the building inspector. And he said the obligations of the building owners is to have a secure facility. It's fire alarmed, it's active, there's no one in the building, it's secured by fencing. There's security guard there. So as far as the standards, they're complying with city code. So it's pretty much, they're observed to be a dormant facility at this point in time, not seeing construction activity. But there's nothing to cite them. And that's just the state of the building. I guess you can't force someone to improve their property. But we can do so to maintain a secure facility, and that is being done.
All right, thank you on that update. My next update is actually the building, like maybe two buildings after this one building, corner of Broad Street and Buffalo Street, where the sighting of the building was reported to me that there was some bricks that were continuing to fall down. When I did request to have this placed on the actual docket, but a day or two later, I actually even, I started seeing crew work in that building. So I'm all set on, on that part.
Would you like me to just?
But if you, yeah, if you have any additional information, absolutely.
Yeah, there is supposedly good progress going on. A permit has been pulled by the, from the building inspector's office. It is, I checked with the chief Warren, fire alarm is working. And they've been making very good progress to safely restore the facade. So that looks like it's happening. And in fact, they're pretty much along on the way to getting it completed. That's the last report we have.
Thank you so much for that. The third item was an update on the American Rescue, pretty much planned funds that are coming. Well, part of it has come in, another portion probably, most likely came in about another thirty days. And there's probably going to be an additional fifty percent or so coming in towards the city. So kind of getting a sense where we are in terms of how much interest have we already gained in those funding that we've received, any projected or expected projects at all? I believe there was some suggestions coming in, maybe at the state level or so, at two cities and towns on how to potentially use the funds. Doesn't necessarily mean that's the way we have to use it. But just trying to get a sense of a little bit of everything, if you will, Director Strong.
Thank you. You're right, Councilwoman. On May twentieth, we received, and some of this might be information I've already disclosed in the past. But anyway, on May twentieth, we received as an entitled community, thirteen million, three eighty-five, two twenty-nine. We put that in a restricted fund. That fund has generated to date on a very conservative basis, fifty-seven hundred fifty-nine dollars in interest. So currently, that fund has thirteen million, three ninety-nine eighty-eight. On August thirtieth, we received the state county share, Providence County. That was seven million, nine ten, nine thirty-six. And we just invested that as well. And we don't know what that interest has equated to until the end of September. When you add everything up, we have twenty-one million, three hundred one thousand, nine twenty-four. We haven't used any money to date. We're still having conversation with the Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns. And also the feds. And, you know, we're just being very cautious at this point. As you know, we did have revenue shortfalls beginning in when the pandemic started. And we budgeted seven million, eight seventy-one, six sixty-one. That is something we will be backfilling in this fiscal year we're currently in. So we'll be in budget. We also, there are also other things that we're looking at. We haven't made any decision on anything, but we're discussing, it's in discussions right now, which are three sewer pump stations. I had a conversation with Director Mason, and he said they would be a total of about four million dollars. Doesn't mean we have to do all of them, but it's, it's in discussion. And we're looking at things that are permissible to do. Also broadband fiber optic with our IT department, that's just short of a hundred thousand. I also have had discussions with the fire department and some of their cabling and fiber optics that they use. They're going to be getting back to me. We had some additional losses in adult daycare and nutrition because the, the facility was in full operation during this time. And also there are ice rink rentals that when the governor shut down facilities and arenas and stadiums, there are losses there that we are looking into also. But to date, we have not used any of this money. So it's still in the discussionary process.
Thank you. So, thank you, Director. The three sewer pump potentially coming up? Should we add that to the Public Works Committee for just FYI informational purposes at all? Or is that something we're waiting on the administration side or maybe update us later on?
I don't think that should be added yet. It's still in discussion.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that, you know, what they're proposing for sewer pumps is applicable to the infrastructure of the, of sewer as well as anything with water and which we don't have. But I want to make sure it meets the criteria.
But I, I would assume that you would, you may agree with me that at some point the council and the administration ought to maybe speak on a couple of maybe ideas, projects, if you will, or guidance on spending of the funds?
Well, I think, yeah, I think the administration and, you know, should, they'll, they'll have conversation and input on this to the council. And then it's, you know, what's ever discussed at that time.
All right. Thank, thank you for that update. I appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you. Dr. Som, I have, my question is, do you have the guideline how to spend it right now? Because I know always there is restriction, there's certain thing you can do, certain thing you cannot do. Do you have a restriction?
We, we have some type of information that we're following. Most of it is like loss of revenues. But some of the other things are very, they're kind of like in a gray area. And we, we're constantly having conversation with the Department of Revenue within the state and also for the Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns with other finance directors and the head of that. So we're, we're being very cautious. I don't think to date, I don't think the state has spent any money, if I recall. And I believe very few municipalities have spent anything. I think they're in the process of targeting, targeting certain things, but they haven't physically spent anything.
Do you have a deadline? Do you have a deadline when this money has to be spent? If it's not spent, what's gonna happen to the money?
No, the money will have to be spent by December of two thousand twenty-four.
Director, thank you.
Director Strom, to Councilwoman Jermaine's point, if you came up with a project that you wanted to do and you were unsure if it fit the criteria. Is there a process to find out, or is it just you guess and you might be right and or we're wrong, we have to pay money back?
Based on if there is a project, there'll be discussion with other people, other finance directors, other communities, and also our administration. So we would not do anything that we didn't feel confident that it would meet the standards that are required.
Okay.
Be an extra cautious on this.
Is there like a liaison with the federal government who couldn't say like put a stamp on it like when you when you apply for a grant, it's under certain criteria and they give it to you if you fit and they?
There isn't one, you know, any person, but there is the Department of Revenue for the state and also on the fed level. So that's ongoing. Also, I'm constantly receiving documentation. And I think, and this is only my opinion now, don't hold this totally confident in what I'm saying. I think as time is going on, things are loosening up a little bit. Now, what that's gonna be, I don't know yet.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Vargas?
Quick question, Director Strom. Is do you know if the if the administration at all is open to community input at all? I know you meant community input on how to spend some of the funds that would be coming in.
It's not something I've discussed with the administration, but maybe Director Moretti can answer that.
Yeah, I'm sure the answer is yes, but at the same time, we probably have to make sure that basically some level of expertise is being used versus some are just having ideas without being able to point to the uses of funds. So I think if someone could articulate point to where they believe funds could be useful, absolutely. But again, just not to open up just a spray because everyone has great ideas, but just to make sure it be relevant to our needs.
Thank you.
Can I just follow up on that one point? If it's okay, Madam Clerk, can you leave update on opera money as an agenda item on the Finance Committee? Going forward, that way the council can get regular updates on this. Thank you. Well, maybe we'll give you Monday night off since we just had it, but I would like to keep it on the docket. Maybe someone will have another question for you. So my my concern with this is that we keep it in the forefront because whatever the money is going to get spent on has to come in front of the council for approval. So I just want to keep that on the forefront. All right. Thank you very much, Director. Councilwoman Vargas, the floor is to leave us.
Thank you. To the administration, through the chair, to the administration, just trying to get a sense as to the updates on ATV. Just wondering, has there been any that have been confiscated? You know, I I put arrested. This is this is not after any specific person. It's just in general. And if any have been confiscated, my memory again may be failing me, but are we any items, any ATVs that get confiscated, are they still going to get shipped to the Dominican Republic? As I think we had discussed this way back when, but I want to refresh my memory on that.
Okay, last question first. I believe the mayor's intent would be to do as just as you've described, but obviously they have everything has to be vetted. And you know, going through the court system and final disposition. So I don't think we're necessary at that point. Now, to answer kind of the first first part of that question is good news. Spoke to police. You may recall there was an incident around April near the gas station. I think it was on Broad. And there was there was an incident of which three ATVs were confiscated and several people were arrested. But there's been no known activity since then. I think the, you know, the actions, as you recall, the joint efforts with Providence Police and then state police are really proving very fruitful, the city of Cranston. So the city is not, the police department is not aware of any, I'll say gangs or groups of ATVs entering the city of Cranston. There may have been a trickle of one or two, we'll say soul riders without major incident. So it seems like the policy, honestly, the policy in place seems to be very successful. Because basically, knock on wood, we've gone through the entire summer without incident. So that's really where we're at at this point. So basically, good news to report.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you. Obviously, I I live up a Broad Street and and those that do as well. Occasionally will reach out to us and it's midnight, one o'clock in the morning, we'll hear it going right by. And I understand that's really tough to control around that time, but pretty much the history, the story about that is that I had a constituent reach out and asked, you know, can we get any updates on the ATV? And I told them I I will add it on the docket per their request, so I'll let them know that.
Yeah, and the PD is not getting getting calls, speaking with Major Padalano today. So silence is golden.
Hope so.
Yeah, knock on wood.
The other one, the other item on there through the chair is the Santander Bank. I'm not sure familiar if any of the council members know, particularly those citywide. But Santander Bank closed on the corner of North and Broad Street. Some overgrowth is starting to happen in that area. Same with an island directly right in front of it. That could potentially be a public works matter. But again, I believe I had asked a few months ago if anyone knew about the closing that Santander was going to be going through as far as that branch. Just wondering if if there's any communications between the branch owner of that building. I'm starting to see folks parked there. Oh, I'm not starting to see. I'm starting to hear from constituents telling me that there's cars now starting to park in that parking lot. Not from what they see, it doesn't seem like what they're doing good business in that lot. And obviously, there's no longer a bank. Maybe the police can kind of monitor that area a little bit, but just wondering if there's also any plans on the economic development side as far as that building's future.
Well, I think if you kind of summed it up, Economic Development has spoken with the branch manager of actually the Reservoir Avenue branch. They've confirmed that the Santander has not, and that is not going to renew the lease. And the business is being forwarded to the Reservoir Avenue location. As to contacting the the property owner, they have not done so, but we can make a note to follow up on to see if there's any plans, but certainly will take note of any growth. Making it look sloppy and make we'll call the attention to the police, but taking a peek around there periodically.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Next item speeding on Beachmont. I'm going to strike that just because I spoke to Mr. McCauley a few weeks ago on that issue, and I know he's working with me on that. And Traffic Safety Commission update. Not sure if that's something that we as a council, is that the administration that actually calls that up? I know each council member had designated a name to be, I believe, appointed on to that Traffic Safety Commission. And I wasn't sure if they're going to be meeting soon.
Yeah, I wasn't sure where you were going with this prior for discussion. The administration has not taken the lead at trying to contact the individuals. We happy to. But no, we we haven't, and we have a list of people that are on the committee various appointments. So whether the council members want to try to contact some of those individuals or the administration, we're fine to do so.
So thank you. So I think I'm going to be the chairwoman of that committee because of Safety Services. So that was all with Leanne when when she left. So I spoke to Rose, and that's just something that she has to get to that committee. The COVID committee, the small business, none of those committees have met, but we don't have all some of that stuff. Rose needs to get from Leanne's documents. So that's that's where that is at. As far as the traffic, that's the administration has some kind of traffic thing, and we have the traffic safety, right?
Well, it did have that board or commission, which fail independent.
I'm sorry, was there one commission, I believe? We have we have something. And then what can you explain, President?
I think the administration might have something separate. The Traffic Safety Commission that the council has, and we did the appointments recently. I think everyone might have got their letters. I'm going to check with the person that I put up. I'm pretty sure he got his when we appointed him. That was a that was Council Vice President Richard Santa Maria's baby. He created that committee to work when we had the CARES program out there doing traffic enforcement on a daily basis and to really bring issues forward that constituents had because it's really a body of residents. So I think the way the ordinance is written, the Chair of Safety Services is also the Chair of that committee. I think it's a great committee to try to bring back and see what kind of great work it can do. I don't know if the administration has another type of board? Are you referring to the same one that we are?
Yeah, the reason for that is just that they didn't want to, you know, we're pointing people to be part of a board and having commissions. And it's, you know, whether it's our responsibility, the administration, or just collaboratively are working. Just want to make sure we're not pointing people and tell them they're going to be on a commission. We're not, and I get it, right, with the clerk's office, and there's so much going on. But I just wanted to get an update just because I was asked by the person.
Oh, no, I understand because people are calling about traffic all the time. But since we're on the topic, we made a COVID commission and COVID is still happening and a small business commission, and we still have small businesses that need help. So we have to do all of them. I don't know.
I think I think just my two cents, I think Councilmember Ranzouli, at your convenience, take a look at the calendar and we can notify. I just give everybody, you know, plenty of notice to when they have to be at that meeting, and you could probably call that meeting at your convenience. We'd have to have the minutes taken. It'd be a public body, so treated just like any other meeting. The Economic Development Committee, I think the head of Economic Development is in charge of that, the way that ordinance was written. So I think it's up to Director Paulino to call that meeting. You know, when he's ready to do that.
I just don't have the I don't have the names of the people who are on on the committee. So that's what I discussed with Rose Howard today.
Happy to work with you, Councilwoman, on on the Traffic Safety Commission if needed, for whatever reason. All right. One, two items are not on here. I know for lack of time, it's I can either add them Public Works or I can leave it the way it is. One of them is Yard Works. I know that's in litigation right now. Not sure where we stand on that, but I received an email from my constituents, and they were really much concerned as to whether or not because they're in where the city is in litigation with Yard Works, and although the school department is a separate body, can the school department use yard work as a contractor? That's one of the items that I that I wanted to discuss, and I guess I'll handle that. And again, I know we're very treading very careful starts we can cannot talk about, but I just figured I ask.
We can't discuss that in open forum. I think it would be appropriate if we wanted to discuss those issues, we do it in an executive session at another time.
Sounds great. I appreciate it. Thank you. And lastly, there's a Director Moretti. I'm wondering if we we can just kind of check this out with the Park and Recs Director. There's a missing backboard on Carberry Field for the basketball backboard part of it. I think it's been missing for quite some time. I believe there was a constituent that reached out to the Park and Recs. I'm not sure it was director or a staff member there. But just trying to get a sense if we can add the backboard in that part of the basketball area on Carberry Field, which is over near like Beachmont. Near Justin Barrows School, that part of the baseball field over there.
So just.
And I'm happy to get in touch with you tomorrow if you need it.
So the basketball hoop, the the backboard to the hoop.
Yeah, and maybe the hoop as well. I'm going to drive by tomorrow morning again just to make sure if there's anything else that's that's missing. But obviously, we have kids trying to enjoy.
Well, we'll have to go by and check that out, see what's needed.
Thank you.
Sure.
I'm good. Thank you so much, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Councilmember Vargas. Moving on, under Councilmember Communications, Councilmember Riley.
Thank you, Council President. So I just wanted to take this time to address for the constituents as well as maybe get some clarity with the administration, the traffic issues in the Garden City area of Ward Six as well as including Route thirty-seven. Obviously, with the increased development of that area over the years, there's come increased traffic. As a resident of Garden City myself, it's it's noticeable on a daily basis, regardless of time. And I just want to make sure that the capacity and development that we're building there is meets with the infrastructure that we have. So I've reached out to the administration. They were very open to discuss it. We're planning on setting up a meeting with the DOT to determine what specifically is the purpose and scope of that state project on Route thirty-seven? And how, if at all, it will help impact the traffic of the area. That will then help us determine what it is we need or need not to do to help with the infrastructure for future projects. Because obviously, there's still land that is set to be developed at some point in time in that area. So we have to assume that with that will come an increase in traffic. So I'd like for us to be proactive and look at the different strategies we can set up now to make our infrastructure more suitable for that development if and when it comes. So I just wanted to, as I understand it right now, and Chief, if you could just clarify that the next steps would be to reach out to DOT, set up a meeting to make those determinations?
Yeah, I think the the reason why you're referring to DOT is Pontiac Avenue, where the core problem is or the congestion is is a is a state road, and that that's that'd be the primary culprit, if you will.
And with the current building on Route thirty-seven.
Yep. And so we've had various forms of contact with them, and we have a nice relationship. So I know they're open to, you know, for meeting with any interested parties. Happy to arrange it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Riley. Moving on to Councilmember Donigan.
Thank you, Council President. I'm just looking to get an update on the how enforcement of the the plastic bag ordinance is going to date. I've admittedly and I guess anecdotally received quite a few phone calls from folks about some places still not being in compliance and just just wanted to get a general sense of of how enforcement is going.
Yeah, sure. The the efforts have been more reactive than proactive, given the limited resources. But where complaints or things have been called to our attention of noncompliance, primarily Director Paulino has visited those businesses rather than take a heavy handed approach. The approach is to approach the businesses and remind them of the ordinance that's in effect, asking them to comply. And for the most part, they do. And what he'll do is do a follow up visit, get their explanation. So he'll do a follow up visit typically within a couple of weeks, a month on the high side to determine if compliance has happened. And there hasn't been many problems since then. So where we're at now, though, is to comply actually with the ordinance, which basically calls for a first warning and a second, and a first would be a warning in the form of a letter to the business advising them. And the second would second one would be second, the action would be finding them two hundred and fifty dollars. We haven't been there yet. We're pretty much will be at the point where we're sending letters. We haven't sent the letter yet. So we have taken a softer approach, frankly. But we're aware of it. The one thing that's not in the ordinance, and we haven't figured it out exactly, is what department is going to be responsible for that? You could say it's you call inspections. It's you can imagine what the feedback I'm getting. So we're probably leaning on hopefully economic development to work in a congenial manner with with the groups in terms of if we have to get to the point where of actually finding perhaps it might come from the legal department, hopefully on an exception basis. So we're trying to feel that out ourselves, frankly.
Is there like a running list of places that have been visited to date or?
The director, the director would have that. I don't have that with me this evening.
Would it be, do you think, could you ask the director to share that with myself? And I don't know if I don't want to speak for the the chairwoman, but as the the chairwoman for Safety Services, if that list could be shared with myself and the chairwoman of Safety Services, I certainly appreciate it.
Sure thing.
Thank you, Councilmember Donigan.
Thank you, Councilmember Donigan, any other Councilmember Communications before we move on? Councilmember Donigan, are you good? Okay, any other questions or comments? There being none, we'll move on. I see Ms. Andoja in the audience, give us one second, we got a few more things to to handle, we'll pivot right back to you. We have introduction of new matters before the council, I'll entertain a motion to send all of the new matters on the docket to the appropriate committees.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion on that? There being none, Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Councilwoman Marino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ranzouli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vargas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jermaine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Donigan?
Councilwoman Camperiano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Riley?
Yes.
Council Vice President Ferry?
Yes.
Council President Pepas.
Yes. Okay, next on the agenda, miscellaneous business on the clerk's desk, we do have an executive session scheduled for this evening. But what I would like to do is send this to a special night, it doesn't say on here who the executive session is for or what it pertains. But I'd also like to add the Yard Works item that was brought up tonight, so we can do two executive sessions in one night, so. It's illegal, do I need to, do we need to take a motion to remove this from the docket? There's no action taken, and so we'll take no action on the miscellaneous business this evening. Moving on, we have the RiDOT surplus state land offer. My suggestion for that would be to put that on the Public Works agenda. If there's no objection. Madam Clerk. And then moving back, the only other agenda item we have tonight is an update from Lisa Andoja, City Council Grant Writer. If you hit the button on the microphone, a green light should come on. On the base. Thank you. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you, it's a pleasure to be here and to see everyone in person after we've been conducting business remotely. I was retained by the well respected members of the council on February first, and I think we hit the ground running. To date, in seven months, we've actually secured one hundred and thirty-five thousand. Expenses have been twenty-eight thousand and the return on investment has been one hundred and seven thousand. As we all know, July one is the beginning of a new fiscal year. There are grants that have been submitted that we're waiting for a determination on. And they include a grant for Specto Pan for water quality and restoration of endangered species. There is a streetscape one to include lighting, streetscape. Ones that could be potentially submitted, President, is open space, DEM has an open space, there is a fifty percent match. And I think that's an issue in terms of other resources there to commit to the match. DEM actually released, I know many of you have have communicated with me directly about bicycle pedestrian crossings, about playgrounds. DEM does have outdoor recreational grants too. The deadline is December seventeenth, they have a large recreational grant for four thousand dollars, and that's something we want to think big picture for outdoor recreation. And the small grant is for a hundred thousand, that would be something for a playground. The methodology that I have used here is actually when there is a grant opportunity, whether it's from a private foundation, the state or the federal, is to actually send it to my direct report, respectfully, the president. As long, as well as in addition to the mayor and the chief. And then collaboratively, we discuss what the priorities are and we submit for it. As everyone knows, we've all been watching very, very closely for the federal funds, the state of Rhode Island got one point one billion dollars in art funding, American Rescue Plan Act funding. I expect before Christmas, we'll see probably twenty percent of it go out. I think you can expect that Rhode Island Commerce will have grants for small businesses, that it's so important that they were able to fight the fight and stay in business post COVID. And to be able to get them some kind of financial assistance, I would expect that to come through Rhode Island Commerce. I would expect a tourism grant. I do not know, I I presume that we probably will see something for food security and for rent relief, that's been an issue. And then also digital, seniors who might not have Wi-Fi at home or an iPhone or laptop, so they can be connected via telehealth to their physicians or mental health providers. Additional things at the federal level, an infrastructure bill, as we know, Congress is working on the final details of that. We don't know what's gonna come out, but we do know to include roads, bridges, road resurfacing, clean water will definitely be an item in there. And they're talking about some kind of recreation, we don't know the particulars, but it's something to keep our eye on as soon as that is passed. And I expect that to be passed before they recess for Thanksgiving. The Champlin Foundation, at the end of the year, will have an opportunity, and that's for a nonprofit, and that would be for libraries, they love libraries or nonprofits. So if there's any deferred maintenance, capital improvements, it would be perfect to submit for that. CDBG, we always keep our eye on CDBG, it's not my side of the house, but I'm a team player, and there was an opportunity recently. If I find any grants that can go anywhere whatsoever to the city, I always respectfully voted to the department head. I sent it to Mr. Sanzi, it was for broadband CDBG, there's gonna be another round of CDBG, we're an entitlement community, but you can do some creative things with that in low to moderate income neighborhoods. And lastly is EPA, climate resiliency, flooding, stormwater improvement, I expect to see something out of there.
Excellent, thank you very much. Ms. Andoja, any questions or comments from the council?
If I may to the chair.
Councilmember Maria.
Council President, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Andoja, I just had a question with respect to the recreational grants, you had mentioned that the smallest amount was one hundred thousand dollars, and I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear what the larger sum potential would be, and the deadline was December seventeen, is that correct?
Could you, I I could not hear you, I'm so sorry.
Sure.
Could you please repeat the question?
With respect to the recreational grants that you mentioned?
Yes.
I believe you stated that the the smallest amount would be one hundred thousand dollars, is that correct?
Yes.
And then the largest amount available, I didn't quite hear that.
Four hundred thousand.
Okay, thank you.
The city has an opportunity to submit two priorities, so a small recreational grant and a large recreational grant.
The deadline again for that was?
Is the seventeenth of December.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other questions or comments? There being none, I'd just like to thank Ms. Andoja for coming in this evening. I would like to add updates from you, maybe quarterly, to the Finance Committee, I know it's tough for you to get in here monthly, but I think it'd be good to keep everything on the radar that you're working on. I know we talk frequently and you, you've been very great with communication, but I think it's also be good to have the whole council updated as well.
It'll be my absolute pleasure, and I think that the president is fairly familiar with my methodology. I chase revenue, I don't generate reports. So there might be additional grant opportunities that we may not be expecting that will be released. As soon as they do, I always tee it up, I follow them on, I look for the priorities and look to submit them, and I appreciate the opportunity, it's been a wonderful interaction, best of.
Thank you very much, and that comprehensive plan amendment grant was a big win, so thank you very much.
My pleasure, thank you.
Thank you, if there's no other matters before the councils tonight, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
I need us, oh, Madam Clerk, please take the role to adjourn.
Councilwoman Marino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ranzouli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vargas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jermaine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Donigan?
Councilwoman Camperiano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Riley?
Yes.
Council Vice President Ferry?
Yes.
Council President Pepas?
Yes.